This conference will now be recorded.
... Consent Agenda on page four, I think there was just a typo in the last name of somebody under Council and Mayor comments, if you go to paragraph two.
It's me.
As a member of Bishop.
Perfect.
Someone makes that motion for that note.
That was what I did this weekend. Thank you, ladies.
Okay. So item number one is consider approval of consent agenda items.
And Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
With the change noted.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
That was Shriver who made the second, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Moat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott? Epstein? Adams?
Yes.
Item number two is requests or comments from the public. Okay. Then we'll move on to item number three, Consider Resolution 2206 regarding issuance of industrial revenue bonds for the IMI III LLC project.
And we have Scott Anderson with us tonight to address this item also. The applicant, Mr. Kincaid is here as well. So CIMI III LLC is the LLC related to this particular project.
Mayor, council members, Scott Anderson, counsel to the city. Items three and four are related items, so I'll give a summary that covers both of them each individual item. The city created the Wood End Road TIF redevelopment district in December of 2021. The district has five distinct parcels. After the district was created, Mr. Kincaid approached the city about a project in Area Two. The city and Mr. Kincaid negotiated the development agreement that was finalized and executed by both parties in March. In the development agreement, the developer agrees to build an approximately 6,000 square foot building and also agrees to construct 93rd Street approximately 138 meter feet south of Wood End Road. Additionally, sidewalk storms, sewer curbs, and lighting will also be constructed along with sewer adequate to serve the site. In the development agreement, the city agrees to construct a lift station, force main, and upgrade the existing portions of 93rd Street south of Wood End. The city and the developer also agree that each party can be reimbursed for a portion of their development costs with TIF revenues. And then the city also agrees to issue industrial revenue bonds solely for the purpose of paying property sales tax exemption certificate. Where we are at tonight is that in the first item before you is item three, which is consideration of Resolution 2022-06 regarding the issuance of industrial revenue bonds. In the resolution, the city agrees to issue up to 2.5 million in industrial revenue bonds for this project. I point out that there is no sales tax, I'm sorry, there's no property tax abatement for this project. The purpose of the industrial revenue bonds is solely to allow the developer to obtain use of a project exemption certificate. This is one of the items that the city agrees to do in the development agreement. And I'm happy to, you know, in this case, the bonds are exactly like all the other industrial revenue bonds that the city's issued in the past for both property tax abatement and sales tax, meaning there's no guarantee of the city, the bonds are not backed by the credit of the city. Instead, they're payable solely to the extent that the developer makes payments on the bonds. Happy to take any questions on the first item, the first resolution that you may have.
And Mayor, make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2022-06.
Second.
Great, we have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Moat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Moving on to item number four, Consider Resolution 2207, setting a public hearing to consider the tax increment financing plan two A for Wood End Road TIF district.
Mayor, council members, the city has created what's known as Project Plan Two A. In this project plan, it basically mirrors the requirements that are in the development agreement. In the project plan, the city says that it will make certain improvements, and the developer agrees that he will build the building and also make the improvements he's agreed to. And additionally, in the project plan, the parties agree to split TIF revenues 50/50 until such time that both has been reimbursed for eligible project costs. In the project plan, it contains a feasibility study where we estimate that there could be up to around $700,000 in TIF revenues. Those TIF revenues would go approximately $150,000 to the city, $550,000 to the developer, assuming, but they are split 50/50 until such time the city's reimbursed, and then the remainder go to the developer.
Scott, just correction, the 700 is TIF eligible expenses.
Yes, those are.
Right.
Only eligible.
Revenue.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, only TIF eligible expenses up to those amounts can be reimbursed. The project plan did go before the planning commission last week, where the planning commission approved, agreed that the project plan complies with the development plans for the city. The next step in creating the TIF plan is for the city to set a public hearing on the TIF plan. What you are doing tonight, you are not approving the plan tonight. We need to say the plan's available and have it available, but all you're doing tonight is setting a hearing, public hearing on the TIF plan, and which is set for, which we'd like to set for June 13th. So the item four of the resolution simply sets June 13th as a date where we will hold a public hearing on the TIF plan.
Why is that date so far out?
Per the statute, it has to be at least 30, not less than 90 days. So we have to, we did the math, I think that was the first available date. We also have to send out notices to property owners, the county, the school district. We have to publish notice of the hearing. And when we, when we did the math, that was the date, the first date that worked.
Madam Mayor, make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2022-07.
Second.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Moat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Moving on to item number five, Consider Resolution 2022-08, forming the Edwardsville Community Fund.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. As you know, in our, in our recent council workshop, one of the items that was discussed and raised by the mayor, it's been an item we've talked about for some time, is to create a foundation or a fund that allows for individuals to, companies to make contributions to a non-for-profit organization, and then those funds can be used to support community projects. What you have before you tonight is basically a resolution that formalizes our board, our process for creating that fund. Again, the fund will be actually with the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation, so they are the foundation, and below the foundation are a number of hundreds of funds, actually. But this will be our fund, it'll be known as the Edwardsville Community Fund. It is proposed, they have a five-member board. The board would consist of the mayor, the city manager, the ex officio from the council to the CPPS board, a member of the CPPS board, and a non-elected citizen at large. All those final two positions will follow the typical process of appointment, that is, they will be an appointment or recommendation by the mayor with the consent of the council. The role of that board is to give decisions on any expenditures of funds. So if a group or an organization or the city wants to expend funds, once they've been placed into the foundation, then it goes to that advisory board. The advisory board says yes or no for whatever amount of money, and that then gives direction to the Greater Kansas City Foundation to release the funds. They have no authority to release those funds without an advisory board giving them direction. What the foundation does, Greater Kansas City, Kansas Foundation, Community Foundation, too many letters, their role is to basically keep it in tax compliance, because as you know, it's a nonprofit, there are a number of tax compliance issues. They invest the funds on our behalf into whatever type of fund mix that we would like to have it put into. They have some standards, and we can adjust those. And then again, when it's time to distribute them, they distribute those back out to projects or entities that have been decided. Probably the best example I can give you, y'all have probably heard of what we typically refer to as the casino, the casino funds that the UG puts out every year, that is a fund of the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation. Then in that particular case, the various commissioners make recommendations of projects. We received one, received funds through that as part of our trail project a few years ago. So it works very much the same way. Again, this board, this resolution creates the board, it basically authorizes the creation of the fund. Items that'll come back will be those final two appointments to the fund, and then from there, that body will make the necessary administrative decisions to collect and/or distribute those funds. Happy to answer any questions. It's a fairly common form. A lot of cities have used the same organizations. Some other agencies use this same type of deal. So they're actually, this is now called the Horizon Foundation is their broader umbrella, so they do this nationally, actually, for the Kansas City area, it's the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation. Happy to answer questions.
I think, Mike, for the record, that we should explain to people where the funds will be coming from, and being put into the fund.
Sure. So there's a couple of mechanisms. One that we've discussed, and we'll be updating our policies around our incentive policies that basically says, when a company comes before this body and asks for incentives, that there will be attached with that a requirement to participate in the community foundation. It also could come from private individuals or companies that want to support our local community and make contributions, so it could be an individual person, it could be a company. It is not funded through taxes or any type of tax support. It's all would be contributed there. We could use it if we wanted to use it for other, you know, we've talked about having, for example, park fees that are attached with new building permits. So those funds could be put here into this fund. The way the fund is being set up, it's not an endowed fund, so both principal and interest could be spent. So, I mean, if that's a choice that's made, you know, hey, we have this much money in there, it's not just the interest, it's principal and interest, that's the decision that's made. So it's not endowed, like an endowed foundation.
And just to add to that, potentially, outside of development agreements, there are already businesses here in Edwardsville and in Wyandotte County that are interested in using their grant funds to contribute to this, to help build into Edwardsville's parks and community.
We have had, yeah. And that's a challenge, for example, when we wanted to obtain funding through, again, I think it's called the Casino Grant Program that they had, the Hollywood Program, we could not receive those funds because we were a governmental entity and not, and we didn't have any not-for-profit or foundation status. So we actually utilized Mid-America Regional Council, who then received the funds through the Greater Kansas City Foundation on our behalf. This would allow us to basically handle those types of things ourselves. So if we, as an organization, want to go out and ask for certain grants from private development, I know we've talked about our parks as an example, oftentimes, they want to have a place that they can make the contribution, that is a tax exempt entity for their purposes, and then the funds go there, and then they can be distributed for a specific project.
It's not uncommon for this to happen in cities with major projects.
It is not.
It happens all the time.
I mean, there's a number of cities around us, I mean, some we've talked to that have some, some form of this. Some create their own foundation, so they want their own 501(c)(3) body, they create it, do all that. This doesn't require us to do all of that, and specifically, it doesn't require us to do the tax filings and those types of things. And there's an annual reporting that'll be provided to us, but we don't have to do the tax filings and compliance and those types of things. So it eliminates the need of our personnel to manage a foundation.
What's the fee that they charge for that?
It's a minimum, if there's funds in this, in this body, it's a minimum of $250 a year, and it's paid out on a monthly basis, and that it's a quarter of percent of the amount in the fund, up to, and I'm sorry, I don't have it with me, it escalates, or the percentage goes down as the amount of dollars in the funds go up. I would say the investment mix that we'll probably be recommending would generate a return of somewhere in the four to six percent. So mostly invested in bond-type of projects, you know, bonds and not in equities, I mean, they do have equities available, but fundamentally would be in money markets and bond-type products and a little bit in equity. So if you look over the past 10 years, that's about a four to six percent return, which is, you know, a safe return on the investment that's being made. Again, that is a decision that that body, this board, would make. Ultimately, they'll select a, an investment policy. The foundation says, here's, here's various ones that are just straight, you know, you can just pick your one, or you can modify those a little bit. In my opinion, slight modification is probably appropriate, and still stay in that, you know, in, basically, the conservative approach is roughly 80% between cash and bonds, about 20% in equities. That's kind of the conservative, the ultra-conservative is all cash, which is probably a poor, poor idea, especially in a high, high inflation rate time, because you're losing money.
Would the committee make that decision, Mike?
Yes, yeah. This group of five would ultimately make that decision. And as we proposed, the mayor would be the chair of this committee, and the city manager would serve as vice chair. We can make some decisions as to, does everybody on the committee get all the advisory reports and have, can call and say, yes, we've made this decision? I think likely we'll limit it, at least initially, to the mayor and myself. So it would take the committee to make a decision, and one of the two of us would be able to call and say, yes, please do the following thing. Obviously, it's all got to be in writing. This resolution will be in writing on file with the foundation. So if somebody calls and says, hey, I'm, you know, I'm XYZ, they can go back to our documents and say, no, you're not an authorized person, you're not even on this group. We have to give them names and address and contact information, et cetera.
Madam Mayor, City Council, make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-08, forming the Edwardsville Community Fund.
Give a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Moat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Item number six, Consider Addendum Number Two to the 2020 Municipal Solid Waste and Recycling Agreement Regarding House Count and Rate Adjustments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. We will kind of start at the beginning with this process and catch us up to where we're at now. In 2020, the end of 2020, I should say, our service agreement with our previous service provider for solid waste and recycling pickup was coming to an end, and we went out for bid for that services, for services to start January of 2021. At that time, we received four bids for that work. I'm going to recap how those costs came at that time. So again, this is either cost per address charged to the city, so not the final residential cost that we, that are included in utility bills, but the price that the city would pay per address for the services for weekly trash and weekly recycling as are being delivered now. So one firm came in at $20.20, one firm came in at $21.95, and one firm came in at $24.75. That last firm, this is a quick caveat, was only provide, could only provide every other week recycling, not weekly recycling as per the contract. And then Casey Disposal's proposal came in at $15.33, which has since been adjusted to 15.52 per the 1.5% rate escalator included in the contract. So 15.52 is what we pay per address to Casey Disposal for recycling and solid waste pickup each week, and 95-gallon pickup for recycling, and 65-gallon pickup for, or excuse me, 95 pickup, 95-gallon pickup for trash, 65-gallon pickup for recycling. So that kind of recaps the 2020 RFP process that led us to ultimately going with Casey Disposal at the time, and I believe now as well, where they're only municipal customer. So it was kind of uncharted territory for them, but in between now and then, the service that we've received from Casey Disposal, I don't really have any complaints, and I've really can attest to their customer service as it relates to both dealing with city hall outreach regarding, you know, missed pickups or issues or that are going to spring up with any contract. They've been communicative, we know who to reach at, on their staff, and they're quick to respond whenever we do have some issue that we need to bring their attention, which was certainly a departure from our previous relationship with our previous service provider. So at this point, what we charge to the residents for each month, that we bill every other month, is $18.70. In reviewing peer community rates for like-service, which we did in 2020 as part of the RFP process to see where we were landing on that kind of spectrum, Casey Disposal's rates were pretty competitive. So it puts the city in a competitive standpoint from a rate perspective for what we're charging for trash and recycling service. These are included in the agenda memo with the communities that we looked at, and that's Bonner Springs, which is a caveat, they're included because they're the other non-unified entity within Wyandotte County, but they don't have their own agreement with the service, with the solid waste service provider. They're part of the overall Wyandotte County solid waste contract with waste management. So they don't have as much control over that service and what's provided at a local level because they're included in that larger agreement with KCK. Baser, which charges $17.72 for weekly pickup of recycling in a $65, or 65-gallon container. DeSoto charges $18.50 for bi-weekly pickup of recycling in a 65-gallon container. Udora charges $19.50 for a bi-weekly pickup in a 65-gallon container. And Tonganoxi charges $20.50 bi-weekly recycling pickup in a 65-gallon container. So especially at 18.70, our price point was pretty favorable compared to the other communities, especially considering our weekly provision of recycling pickup. It's just, that's not been, in these communities, which are similar population size, I think Basers, out of all these kind of peer communities that we looked at as far as the metro region up here, the only community that we were over as far as the price standpoint to the resident for weekly trash and weekly recycling is Baser. They have a contract with waste management, they're also very dense, so they have a lot of population in, you know, consolidated neighborhoods, which affects their rates. But that's, that's, Baser remains shockingly low as far as what they can, what they can charge for their solid waste services, and that's informed by their contract with waste management. So that kind of recaps the peer review piece of that. Also going on at the same time, and this is kind of unrelated to the rate question, but it is related to solid waste collection in the county as a whole, is the solid waste committee at Wyandotte County has been convening over the last number of months, going on about a year and a half, two years now. The UG hired a consultant to kind of kick the tires on their solid waste, the way that that service is structured. And they're going to be, there's a master report, I don't believe it's been adopted yet, but the final version is in draft form, and I'm working through, it's way through all these different committees. I've been a part of that committee, so I've been participating in those discussions, and I'm going to give a little broad generality of how their recommendations shake out, but essentially, their recommendation, their consultant recommendation to the UG is, your service should look a lot more like Edwardsville service. So that's weekly trash and weekly recycling in these, in the 95- and 65-gallon containers, and structuring bulky item pickup to event-based type activity, like we do with our citywide cleanup, and then our curbside bulky item cleanup, which is scheduled in November. One of their big things that they want to do is increase their diversion rate, so that's the rate of materials that's diverted away from the landfill because of recycling, they want to bump that up considerably. Wyandotte County as a whole is at 4% diversion rate. Bonner Springs, as its own entity, is at 8% diversion rate, and Edwardsville is at 18% diversion rate. And that's largely because of, almost solely because of our weekly recycling service, people are using it as a popular service, and we don't really want to make, our recommendation is not to make too many changes on that because of that. So I just mentioned that piece of it, just to note, you know, I mentioned Bonner Springs as part of that larger agreement with KCK, but I would imagine, certainly within the span of the lifespan of this contract, the remainder of this contract, we should expect to see some, you know, either incremental or significant changes to the solid waste structure for KCK and Bonner that's going to affect their rates, which obviously, they're communities that are in our, on our county that we're comparing against. So that's, that kind of catches the group up, you know, in the broad strokes on that, the work of that committee and how their recommendations are shaking out for KCK and Bonner Springs.
Zach, just so I'm looking at this accurately, does Bonner Springs have recycling as well?
They do, but they're not, they don't get provided any totes. So they, it's, it's like small bins that they get, and those aren't even, those aren't provided by the contract either. So individual people need to have their own cans and their own bins, and so there's some limit to it, it's less than 65, it's like a little kind of handheld.
I've seen the ones in KCK, I bet it's the same.
Yeah, and they used to provide all those for all the addresses, but they don't, so if you're a new customer who moves in and you don't have those bins at your address, you got to go get your own if you want to get service for trash or recycling. You're going to get charged either way.
Zach, how does that go with that? You said 8% recycle from Bonner Springs?
Mm-hmm.
With that little bin, how do they figure that number when the other one, KCK, was 4%?
I mean, I.
How do they come up with, with these little, they're like a bushel basket.
I think that, I mean, the easiest way I could, because Bonner, KCK uses those small little bushel baskets as well, so just more people in Bonner Springs are using it as a percentage of their population than the people using it in KCK. It's really the, I mean, that's the.
They typically, and Mr. Moat, typically, they'll do a diversion rate study. So what they will do is they will pick a hundred households or something of that nature, and what they'll do through their trucks or through other, how many times does it get picked up at that location, and what's the size of that container, and then they basically extrapolate that over, over a city, right? That's generally how they figure that out. I mean, they, you know, recycling typically is not a weighted item in the sense of their trucks are filled, they're taken to a site where they're separated by materials, and then it's sold by weight typically, but it's, you know, they can measure, but I don't know.
I'm not going to pretend to understand.
Well, I mean, the truck, the truck may pick up, you know, they may be driving down the road and pick up Kansas City, Kansas, and the next address, two addresses are in Baser and another. So they, again, at least in my experience, they will do some kind of a field audit, and then extrapolate that out over the population to determine these. We're a little easier in the sense that they can look at how much trash goes in the landfill, how much goes. We're a little easier in the sense that they can look at how much trash goes in the landfill, how much goes into the recycling system because they do know that. That's our total tonnage and they can divide those two a lot easier when you have one place that they're picking up.
Zach, was there anything else that you had in there?
The only other thing I'll point out as far as the background information is that we do not include the mobile home park in our waste or a solid waste pickup agreement. There wasn't, we approached them when we went out for RFP at the end of last year. And said, do you want to participate in this with us and, and possibly incur some savings in that? And at the time they didn't want to pursue that. They've got their own contract. They had it with Waste Management. I believe they have it with Honey Creek now or Republic, I should say. So they continue to operate, you know, by themselves, which is a large dense part of the population. So even though I'm, I'm pulling these, these peer communities for comparative purposes, a good chunk, probably about a quarter of the addresses in Edward, in Edwardsville are not being serviced by this contract. So from a population standpoint, you know, ours is inflated because we don't include the mobile home park in those pickups. So I just point that out as, as another kind of differentiator between Edwardsville and these other communities.
You know if they, I'm sorry, you know if they recycle with their?
They do not have recycle.
I think it would be a good idea anytime that we are reviewing contracts or bids on the trash and recycling to just reach out to them. Just anytime that we're redoing a contract, go ahead and reach out to them. If they choose not to, that's fine. But just to give them that opportunity to.
Well, they just, they, they just signed a new, I mean, it's been within probably this year, I would imagine that they signed a new contract with, with Republic County. Or Republic, with Public, sorry.
I remember the, when this came up, maybe it was February, Councilman Bishop asked for specific numbers when they're requesting, when Casey Disposal's requesting a rate, rate hike, we were given some percentages that were kind of vague percentages and different things that have gone up. But we, they were, it was requested that we have actual bottom line numbers and expenses. Do you have that for us tonight?
So what was the, the initial request that Casey Disposal made to us to adjust their, so they came to the, they came to staff beginning of February with the request to make this, this mid-contract adjustment. And we brought the request to your attention at the end of February, just to let you guys, give you guys the heads up that we are beginning to review this. And if you have questions in between now and then to let us know. I believe Councilmember Bishop did ask at that time what that rate increase was at, going to be, was, was being requested at that time. So the initial request from Casey's disposal was to raise it from 1552 to 1997. That was their initial request that they made to the city to, to make an addendum to that per address count or per address charge.
Right. Just to clarify, that, that wasn't exactly what I meant though. When they gave us a list of percentages, fuel's gone up this much. Certain parts of trucks have gone up this much, different things. And so it was mentioned, hey, some of the trucks are leased. So these might not be actual costs or expenses to Casey Disposal. Please get us the list of actual data and expenses. How, how much is your fuel bill for January to through March of this year compared to January through March of last year? For example, has that information been brought to?
So we've, we've invited Matt Gibson from Casey's disposal and that, that request was made to them. So I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'll finish up this portion of it, the staff portion of it, and then I'll turn it over to you. If you've got questions and specifically on those fronts, they're aware that, you know, we're going to be requesting that data as part of this consideration process.
Very good.
So we'll get, but before we get there, I do want to kind of put out what we have laid out as the alternative, the counterproposal to the one-time 1997 increase. So what we've worked out between, between that point in February and now, what we've done is done kind of an address audit. So part of this is we revisit the address count from time to time anyway. So that part is kind of routine. But we, we kind of firmed up what that ad, for that address that we're actually being charged for, which is going to affect the overall cost to us. So that's included in, in the addendum as well, that we're making that adjustment. And then, or that we will, I just, I note that, that we're going to be making that adjustment to the contract just per how the language is already spelled out. What the alternative proposal to the 1997 increase is that we would kind of stagger those increases out over the length of the contract with some caveats in there that we would require before we would move forward with any increase. So the first year increase would come, or the first increase, I should say, would begin June of this year. And it would adjust the per address charge from the city to Casey Disposal from 1552 to 1752. Now, we don't want to make any mid-year rate changes. So our, in our review, our recommendation would be if that's the direction we want to go, that if there's a deficit in the solid waste fund at the end of the year due to this, because our increase, our rate to the, to the provider has increased, but we are not increasing the charge to the residents. If there is a deficit in there, then we would transfer that whatever amount that it would be needed from the sewer fund, the other, our other utility fund to the solid waste fund to cover that cost. So we don't end up with a negative balance and have some kind of statutory violation from an audit perspective in that fund. The sewer fund is healthy enough and could support and can support that without, without changing their rates either. If, if delinquency rates kind of hover where we think they're going to stay at, we'll have more data once this next round of billing comes out. But we're anticipating somewhere between that 15 to $16,000 transfer from sewer to solid waste to cover that potential deficit. So that assumes that, that on the high end, the delinquency rate is about 15%, but if it's, if it's lower than that, that we won't need to transfer as much. I think folks are, we're getting to where it's that less, that 10% or less, which ideally it wouldn't be within that window. You're always going to have some delinquency. But you have to build that in. That's, that's another kind of variable you want to build into your pricing structure. So that would carry us through to the end of this year. At that point, essentially the biggest change is that Casey Disposal can request up to a 5% increase in those charges, in those per address charge to the city. With the caveat that they are, those increases are supported by the CPI for solid waste and trash collection. So CPI and the Bureau of Labor Statistics releases a report every month with those percent changes from, you know, January of 2021 versus January of 2020. So they've got a, some kind of metric in there that shows costs specific to the solid waste industry of how those from a nationwide standpoint are, are are changing year to year. Obviously we want to see from a local standpoint, what other data they would have to support any other increases. To your point about fuel charges, landfill fees, things of that nature that are affecting this contract specifically. So that would allow them an up to 5% increase in those charges. And so what I've done for the purposes of the agenda memo is spell out the financial situation. If that were to, if we were to that, that provision kind of carries out the rest of the, the remainder of the contract. So each year they could request up to a 5% increase with the provision of this additional data. So what we spelled out is if this, if they were awarded a 5% increase each year, so the maximum amount, assuming that, you know, the data is what it is and that CPI data supports a 5% increase for the next, until the end of the contract period. Where we would end up at, at the end of the contract, the beginning of January, 2025 would be a charge to, to the city of $20.37 per address and an ultimate charge to the resident of $24 per month. So essentially if we were to max out, if, if the data supports a 5% increase for the remainder of the contract, our rates would go from 1870 as they are now, beginning in 2023, we would adjust that. If it was to be maxed out at the 5%, if that was to be supported, that would be the charge to the resident would be $21. And then it would be a dollar increase essentially for the remainder of the contract, if, if it were to be a maxed out at 5%. So that kind of spells out the, the math of all this. I'll now turn it over to the council if they've got questions of me or of, of our guests from Casey's disposal about the requests and then we'll take those at that time.
Zach, one thing I didn't see in here is our current contract. What's our current agreement with, with Casey Disposal?
Meaning in what?
So our current rate is 1552.
And it includes a year, an annual 1.5%. They can, they can request and get a 1.5%.
1.5. So we're not only raising $2 a month, but we're also increasing the 1.5 to 5%.
Correct. With the, with the, with the provision that they provide. Right now the escalator is just an automatic escalator. They get 1.5% each year without having to provide any, you know, metrics to support that. Just built in assumptions and inflation and CPI and things like that. But yes, the, the change would be to that language that they can request up to a 5% if they have data from CPI and BLS and their own internal sources to support that.
And that wouldn't be an automatic, that would come to council to decide? Or if the CPI supports it, then it's an automatic 5%?
We would probably bring that to the council for the, to finalize those rate changes because they would have some bearing on the rate ordinance that we do at the end of the year.
No, I think, I mean, I think that's a critical point though, is it? So it, it's a contract language issue about, does it, so if, if the CPI, let's just say the CPI is 3.2 for that area. Do they get an automatic 3.2? I mean, after requested, right? So in both, you have to request, we want a rate increase. And they say, and we want it at CPI of 3.2. I think your question, and I don't know that we have the answer, or at least I'm not sure. Does that mean that that is supported? So they've supported it through the CPI, you know, at 3.2? Or do we have the authority to say, thank you, but we'll give you a 2%? No, no, no. 1.5 is, yeah, 1.5 is a given today. That would go away and it would be replaced with this CPI. Now, if we want to set a minimum floor, that, that would be a question, right? Is it, is it an automatic 1.5 and then up to something more they can request? I mean, I think that's a contractual question here. Probably needs to be answered. I, I would just note on, on your present, so at the end of 20 or for the year of 2025, the residential rate would be $23.
Oh, yes. Sorry. I got one ahead. Yes, you're right. You're right. 23.
And I, and I would just, I think would note that, you know, that rate would still be, you know, less than what we receive from one of our bidders. And we, we would assume that these rates we got from bidders two years ago have probably gone, you know, there's been some adjustment in the contract. I mean, most of them would have had some type of an adjustment factor in whatever contract we would have entered into. It would have been 1.5%, 3%, 5%. I don't, I don't know, but I think it's fair to say that those rates would have gone up over the period of the contract.
Right. And I think that, I mean, the folks on our council are really reasonable and understand that due to current climate, inflation has affected prices everywhere. And we understand that. On the other side of that is when we're in a contract, we have to do our due diligence and making sure we're representing our community. And, and the purpose of a contract, you know, is, is to be taken seriously. And so we, I feel like the request that was made from our council previously in getting the actual numbers before we move forward and raise rates for our entire, not our entire city, other than mobile home park, but for a large part of our city would be getting those numbers. And, and I know we have a representative here. So maybe he has those for us, but I think that would be reasonable.
A couple of things. Oh, go ahead, please.
February about, you know, an option of recycling every other week.
Right. And I was just going to address that. Yeah. We, we did discuss that with the, with, with Casey Disposal and he could speak to it a little bit more. That wasn't really a, an area where we would see significant cost savings. Yeah, something to, something that I agree. Also in the, in the, the other change, I would note that if, if the, as far as additional services that the city would get for the additional cost, which is an important part of this, would be an additional bulky item pickup scheduled for the summer. So right now we've got our citywide cleanup that happens in May. We've got a bulky, curbside bulky item pickup that happens in November. This would include a second bulky item pickup that would happen in August. So with May, August, November, we'd have bulky item pickup events. The citywide cleanup would remain unchanged. We add a curbside bulky item pickup in August and then we keep the bulky, curbside pickup in November.
And so just to clarify, that is included. This, the city won't get an additional bill for the additional.
Correct. That's, that's for, that's included in these price points. Correct.
I think two things just broadly from, from a staff standpoint, right? So I think based on the various inputs, we wanted to, number one, if you, if you're going to have a change in rates, we didn't want to combine that with a reduction in service, right? I mean, if, if you're now have to pay more, you don't want to pay more and get less. So, so we, we tried to find a solution that said, we want to hold it. We, we did talk about the, the every other week recycling, but again, I think it was approximately 30 cents. So it wasn't enough that we felt we'd, you know, make that decision. I think the other thing is we understand the challenge that we're all in relative to cost and, and, and our daily expenses. And we wanted to try to find a solution relative to the customer, right? That we could find a way to hold the current year rates without impacting it in the current year. Because people have started the year, we, we, you know, we, we've said, this is your garbage rate for the year. This is your sewer rate for the year, et cetera. We understand things may, could change that, but, but we tried to find a solution that helped the end user or, you know, our citizen not to have one more thing go up in their basket of bill. So those were kind of some overriding directions that we tried to put into this, just for broad.
And again, to keep the, we'll turn it over to Matt and your questions for Casey Disposal. You know, we're trying, just to, I'd like to, I think it would benefit the conversation to keep it in perspective as far as what the request is at this point. And that's the set, the 1552 to the 1752. It does change the maximum amount of increase that they can request, but it does not guarantee that. So what's spelled out right now as far as outwardly looking at, at, at future rates makes a lot of assumption on delinquency and assumption that, that those increases are, are, and inflation in the market conditions continue the way that they are now or get worse potentially. We don't know for sure, even, even as 2023 is approaching, how that's going to shake out. It could be that the BLS and CPI data only supports a 2% increase, which is more than the 1.5 that was in there, but not to the 5% level. So what's in the memo is worst case financial situation from a, from a cost perspective. It's not, if we were to move forward with this addendum, it in no way obligates the city to these increases. I just wanted to put it out there that, you know, this is, if we were to go down this path, this, this is the potential, this is the maximum cost potential. So you guys have a better sense of, you know, outwardly looking, how that affects residential rates, not just now, but possibly up until 2025.
How many addresses are served?
The address count right now is about 1,083. So we had some, the, the previous address count included, which was done, you know, part of the, some of it was carryover from whenever we did address. The address count with Waste Management included some lots and addresses that just weren't being serviced. There were even a couple. There's those areas along Riverview or 94th Street where for whatever reason, a KCK address was getting serviced and we caught those or a Bonner Springs address was getting serviced, we caught those. But I think the 1,083 number or 84, it's, it's a little bit less than 1,100. Right now, it's probably the, the most recent one's a little bit of a misnomer because we got a lot of people paying because we sent out some delinquency notices saying, if you don't start paying and then get a payment plan set up, then we're going to send you the collection. So we got a good, you know, a, a pretty good rate of return for this last billing. We'll probably know better with the next one. Based on years past, at that address count, I'm going to assume 10 to 12%, which is too high. And a lot of it is in this, I mean, the town's just got a long memory as it comes to, to trash service. And so, I mean, we'll still have folks be a little confused. Well, aren't they billed every quarterly? And then we'll have to explain, no, they've been billed every other month for two years or for three years at this point. Or that folks who just don't pay at all and then assume that they're, it'll get assessed their property taxes, which we haven't done in a while. So it's, you know, it's been a long-term communication of those changes that we made back in 2018, whenever we first changed the billing cycle. That was mostly related to the changes that we were making in the sewer side of things and we assumed control of that. But that's what changed the billing cycle and, and things like that, which takes a while for people to, to get, to get a hold on when it's been one way for so long.
Zach, what is roughly the cost of a bulky, bulky item pickup? Cost for that?
To us, I couldn't say for. To us, I couldn't say for sure. I guess it would depend on what.
Just curious, I don't know where where the June one came into effect. I don't know.
The August one, you mean, the the?
The August, correct.
Well, I mean, that was really just a way to figure out, can we also, you know, we want to, to Mike's point, we don't want to, we certainly don't want to offer an increased rate and a reduction of services. Is where we feel we would be if we took away a day or a week of recycling. But this was a way to, if we're gonna add costs, we want to add services. I couldn't say exactly what that is going to cost to Casey disposal. It's included in these rates, so it costs this much for us.
But it would be included in a seventeen fifty two.
Right.
Right.
There'd be no additional charges for that event.
Right, yeah. We get charged for the citywide cleanup for the, that's mostly for the dumpster piece of it. I mean, they the provision of the dumpsters, and that's all spelled out in the contract now. But even with the the November bulky item pickup, that's included in the current rate that people are paying. We don't pay additional for that. That's included in those rates.
Zach, on the, in the, in the addendum, number two, uh, section five, uh, B. It's, I mean, I'm sorry. It's A. It says, it says, um, two hundred ninety five dollars per container per month. Any additional tons over four tons shall be assessed at thirty dollars. And then you have forty five in parentheses.
Oh, sorry, that should be, that should be.
After the thirty, after the four tons.
That should be thirty dollars per ton. That's a, sorry.
So it's not forty five?
It's not forty five. It's thirty.
Cool, alright. We maintain a roll off container for city use.
Right, if there's a, right, if we need it for whatever purpose.
And then did Matt from Casey disposal want to present, did you have anything for us as far as the actual expenses?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, uh, crunching numbers.
Full name and.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Gibson. I'm the CEO and owner of Casey disposal. Sorry, I don't do this.
No, no, no. Thank you.
Um, so what we did was I went through and grabbed the two most important uh, pieces of information to that to look at in this case, and that's gonna be fuel and landfill. So, uh, last time we spoke, I think we had, we had a presentation on board. And like you said, it showed kind of percentages and numbers, but you wanted to know the actual cost here in Edwardsville. So what we're looking at, um, when we first started was about five hundred eighty five dollars per week is what it would cost just to dump trash for the city of Edwardsville. And that's gone up to eight hundred ninety dollars per week today. And this is so from week one to today, that's the difference in in cost and just trash. So if we equilibrate that over a month, you're looking at around thirteen hundred bucks, thirteen twenty per month of an increased cost in just landfill fees. Uh, just for the city of Edwardsville. Uh, fuel, we were, when we first started, we were, we're using about, in in a tank, you're looking at fifty gallons a tank, and we would use most of that. So it's kind of hard to judge exactly how much we use. So these are rough numbers that we're looking at. So in total, with all of our trucks that we had running through, uh, our trash and recycling trucks, we were running about, let's say, a hundred and twenty five bucks per week, uh, per pickup that we were spending here in the city of Edwardsville. So now with the fuel at five bucks per diesel, we're looking more at like two fifty, two sixty per week um, in in the city of Edwardsville that that we're picking up now. So roughly around five hundred bucks or so, uh, increase in fuel per month, right? And then you're looking at labor. We did labor without going into too much detail. I don't want to say how much we spent prior and then how much we spent now, but the the adjustment's been about five hundred dollars per month in just increase in, uh, what we had to increase our, excuse me, our, uh, our staff just to keep them. So I'm sure you guys all heard about staffing, with trucking and things of that nature. So we had to pay our people a lot more. We like to take care of them. Uh, we are a local company and we're more a family based, so we want to make sure that we pay our people good so they give you good service. And we feel like from talking to Zach and other staff, that that's what we're, we're gonna do. We had a few hiccups with, uh, some recycling blowing around, and, uh, we wanted to rectify that, move some drivers around and get that straightened up. But little things like that is why we think we, uh, we're doing a great job here, and we want to continue to do that for you guys. But we can't do that and lose money, because then we'll we'll go out of business, of course. So I don't know if you have any more questions for me, or if you wanted any more numbers that I can present.
Well, and one thing I'll I'll mention too about the recycling is, is I got calls about some recycling blowing out of the truck and sent an email in, and they they were really quick to respond and have been a really, really good, just, uh, customer service and communication and things like that. So I do think they've been a good partner to Edwardsville, and we appreciate that you're local to Edwardsville. That's a big deal. Um, when I'm, when I'm crunching the numbers on just the numbers you presented, I met about twenty two fifty a month of an increase, um, which would be about two dollars a month total per household. Um, and we're looking at two dollars a month right off the bat, and then up to another, oh, gosh, two, two dollars over the next couple of years. And so kind of what I'm looking at on this, and and you can tell me if this would help you guys or if it would cover. But instead of right away saying, let's increase the five, the one and a half percent to a five percent, addressing what we're dealing with now, which this two dollars would cover their their loss, the revenue loss. I I don't know that we that we right now need to jump to the five percent from the one and a half percent if we're also doing the rate increase. And I don't know if the council has other questions about that, but it seems like the two dollars would pretty much cover it, wouldn't it?
So the reason why I think we came up with this structure is we didn't want to, obviously, when it came to the first time, it was nineteen ninety seven, that's a hard pill to swallow. So we tried to crunch the numbers with Zach and staff and try to come up with a better, more palatable, uh, rate increase. Because the nineteen ninety seven is really where we need to be to make a little bit of a profit, right? To make a decent living. So what we did was we took away that profit and said, okay, we create a good partnership. We can pay down these containers in the next three years or wherever that needs to be. Then we can, we can really see a good profit margin once we get to that number. So obviously, a lot of trash haulers were in the twenty range, twenty one range, twenty five range. We're in the city of Edwardsville. We're right here. So we don't have to drive as far, the landfill's right here, so that's why we're able to come in a lot cheaper than a lot of these folks. But with a huge cost increase that I didn't even late spell out for you, those are the extra costs, costs that we're not making up for. So like the brakes, the tires, the the little things, right? So all of that stuff adds up. I didn't want to bore you with all of that little information, but I just hit you with the big ticket items. And so that's what you're seeing. This covers the big ticket items for us. I can make up the cost now in other places with our subscription and our commercial and things like that, so we can create a good relationship. But we would be nice to eventually get to that number where we need to be. And so I think that's why staff and myself came up with the the step that we did to maybe get a little higher increase in future years.
Mike, what's the balance in our sewer fund?
It's in, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but I want to say it's probably that's about seven hundred thousand.
We have the back full package.
Well, I don't know if that has the, you don't have the cash balance in this one, but we we have what's current, but we don't have a cash balance report in this one, so. But it's sizable.
But what's sizable?
I want to say probably about the six, seven hundred thousand dollar range. I'd have to double check, but I think in the Yeah, we can pull that real quick. We got the last, last month's cash to make up the December payment.
Uh, Sean, our finance director's gonna go pull that number so we have a firm one to give you. But the reason we keep such a sizable balance in that is because whenever you have major repairs in the sewer, you want that sizable in there. And that's, it's it's enough to support, you know, some of the potential catastrophic, you know, repair that we would need in the sewer section. That fifteen to sixteen thousand, if the liquidity rates remain at the high end of fifteen percent, you know, that rate, that fund could stomach that that trade.
So I I'm gonna throw maybe a question. So I I I'm gonna try to summarize here a little bit. So I think I ran the same numbers, right, somewhere, somewhere just to cover their landfill increases and fuel increases. Somewhere in that twenty two to twenty five thousand dollar range seems pretty, pretty quick. So the the additional, and I don't think it's a lot, but the the additional bulky item pickup, what would you estimate that cost to be? So basically, running your trucks and a couple of guys for, for, you know, at least, I mean, I'm assuming your pickup is gonna be somewhere in that eight, nine hundred dollars for that pickup, plus whatever your fuel is, so you probably have a couple thousand. I mean, that's that.
Yeah, so when we first ran the contract and we ran the numbers, I think, I don't have it in front of me, I want to say it was around thirty eight cents. Does that sound right? Somewhere in that range. So now we're closer to around fifty cents for that bulky item.
Or a thousand dollars, you're you're roughly five thousand dollars. The reason why I bring that up, uh, potential that you, you know, again, I think what we we're all trying to do is, I mean, we want them to, I mean, they've done a good job for us. We want them, keep them, quite honestly, there's not a lot of options out there in in this field, right? It's, it's not like we got twenty vendors to pick from. So I think they've, they've done a, a, a good job in that sense. So some somewhere there. So, you know, if we approved an adjustment this year, similar to what we're talking about, this two dollar range, and we didn't impose that, at least the first year, trying to impose that extra pickup this year, right, that gives a little bit of a margin to them. I mean, I'm not saying that's a great big margin. And then we can look at those twenty three, four, fives. We have that, if we're trying to look at what those future increases are gonna be. I think, I think using the CPI for solid waste is a much better mechanism than CPI for the broad market basket. I mean, now they're buying fuel like we buy fuel, and they're buying, you know, different things, but they're not buying bread, milk and cheese and, you know, which is your generally your broad, you know, your broad market.
I think I'd prefer to see the CPI, um, when we're reconsidering that adjustment potentially in twenty twenty four, than when our rates are going up two dollars a person for our customers and then doing a five percent on top of that when we were only under, when we were only expecting the one and a half percent. Um, that might be a little bit easier for the consumer as if we're doing the two dollar rate increase. Now, we're covering it, but in January, that goes over to our citizen. And so at the same time, we're doing a up to a five percent CPI in addition to two dollars. I think that could be quite a jump where it would, might be a little easier pill to swallow if we wait until twenty twenty four to consider the CPI and not have it in automatic but brought to council at that point.
Well, I would, I would just know, I just, again, we're just running quick numbers here. So, so if you, if the the first year went up to that seventeen fifty two, which is, you know, presenting twice as twelve point nine percent, right? If you kept the one and a half percent for those next three years, you end up at about eighteen thirty two at the end, you know, at twenty twenty five, relative to then what they originally requested of the nineteen ninety seven. You have a dollar and eight difference, right? Relatively small margin there. You know, again, you know, so is that, should that rate is one and a half, the right number should be a little bit higher, maybe five's too much? I mean, you know, is there some market in between?
And I'm okay with having the conversation. I just think if we're, if we're bumping up in twenty, January twenty twenty three, the two dollars to the consumer, then maybe freeze that CPI adjustment until twenty twenty four, if that makes sense.
Well, yeah, we, when we have two different things here, we have our cost. Now, one of the things is, again, what's what's our, and I say our margin, right? So, I mean, what we, what we add on to the bill is is to maintain costs. So, right, we we pay for the cleanup day, there's a cost for doing those. We do just other special events around around cleanups and things of that nature. Uh, we have a billing expenses, right, which those postage and things, paper, I mean, goes up as well. So, but we control that, right? So what, how much, you know, do we need? I think as Zach, you know, tried to keep a fairly level amount here. So, you know, if we're, if our cost is twenty dollars and thirty seven cents in the last year, and we're charging twenty three a month, that's about a three dollar, roughly a two fifty to three dollar margin. Can it be less than that? It's possible. I mean, what we, what really kills us and what's hurt us is is delinquencies, right? If they get too high, that's really rarely we have to be careful. We know we're gonna have delinquencies.
So what percentage do we have, and what are you factoring in for delinquencies?
I think you you were factoring.
So for outward outwardly out, so for this year, you know, we're, if if we're considering a transfer from sewer to solid waste to cover a potential deficit at fifteen to sixteen thousand, that assumes that our delinquency rate is at fifteen percent, which is very high. And it's been that high in the past, that people are starting, have caught up over the last couple of years to it. So we're hovering around that ten percent. But I think when when we go and look forward, about ten percent delinquency is what is built into my estimates. Because you're always gonna have delinquency. Ten percent is really the max that you want to see it at. I mean, actually, the max you want to see it at is zero, but, you know, from a planning perspective, you don't want to overestimate your delinquency rate, because then you're overcharging, you know, customers. But you want to have it built in somewhere so you're not, you know, you're not losing money in those margins. So to answer your question, for our budgeting purposes, as far as putting together the budget goes, we assume around a ten percent delinquency rate. What these never show is assuming a fifteen percent delinquency rate at the end of this year, which was hopefully too high.
For your.
I have, I can have a challenge with robbing Peter to pay Paul in in transferring accounts, because we worked hard to maintain those accounts and so forth. The challenge is, we've got a thirty percent inflation rate. We don't have an eight percent. We have a thirty percent inflation rate. And this is, a lot of this is based on making up the thirty percent over a four year period of time. It looks like to me is that the real cost is closer to the two thousand and twenty five cost or amount that you're having, or at least the two thousand twenty four cost. So, so basically, you're, you're fronting part of that thirty percent infla- or inflation up until twenty twenty four to where you start getting to where if if that's, and if that's if nothing happens. You know, we're, we're assuming that we aren't gonna have thirty percent next year, and the next year, and the next year. We, we don't know what the inflation rate's gonna be. And I kind of see your point is why do we negotiate five years out? But the, but the reality of it is, you're fronting the money. If your break even is somewhere around nineteen bucks, you're fronting the money for a couple of years for us to maintain a relationship. And I'm assuming all your numbers are honest and ethical.
Yeah.
And so, so based on that, if that's the real number, it's gonna be tough to avoid that, the the automatic increases. Because we're not, we're not even factoring in more inflation yet.
Will you clarify, are you breaking even at the nineteen, or you're profitable at that? Okay, and are you profitable at the eighteen thirty nine?
More, that's more of a break even. I have Zach number for you, but it's.
And to just to your point about fund balances, you know, we, the reason we don't have a, we, our solid waste fund essentially operates as an in and out fund, because it doesn't pay for anything other than this contract. So it didn't make sense previously to have a balance of thirty thousand dollars in that account, because it doesn't, doesn't go anywhere. So
Agreed.
It it, we, it's, it hovers around twelve to fifteen thousand, depending on delinquency most years, and sometimes less than that if delinquency is high. So there's not a lot of value in 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 having, that's why we have to turn to the sewer fund as a utility fund for that transfer and not just, you know, have the actual solid waste fund.
So the solid, yeah, I was just saying, so the solid waste fund, we roughly keep a month's worth of billing in it, right? Because we're, roughly, that's what we keep.
It's a pass through account.
Right. The the sewer fund right now, as of right now, sits at nine hundred fifty six thousand. Now, understand, we bill every other month, and so, but we still pay cost monthly. So it's at a tight point right now because bill collections, right? So right now, we're collecting, and the next cycle, billing it out. So that, that number will come down, but that's, that's why I said, I think that's, you know, probably that's seven hundred thousand. If, if, you know, we get the audit, we'll know for sure. But it's probably gonna be that seven to eight hundred thousand at a year end amount, right? Yes. Yes.
Thirty, twenty-five to thirty thousand a month.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we. Yeah. We, we paid for this month so far, we, you know, we've spent thirty-seven for eighteen forty-five, which is probably our, our bills of U G. And there's a few other things, but yeah, it's around that, that dollar. So we've spent three hundred and fifty thousand or so treatment a year. And it, and it's going up because volume is, you know, flows have gone up.
Just to throw it out. If we were to increase the rate to the citizens to twenty bucks, June first. That would reduce our deficit from almost, well, somewhere between fifteen, sixteen thousand. That reduces it to fifty, fifty-three hundred dollars if we went up to twenty bucks. It's a seven percent increase. I don't, I know nobody likes to talk about this stuff, but it's reality. And, and this, all of this money is the people's money. All of the whole bucket of it. So it's, and so if we did that, it would reduce the deficit to fifty-three hundred dollars for this year. And, and if, I guess my concern is these are working with today's dollars and today's inflation through twenty twenty-five. If things continue at all like they are. They're, they're good. We aren't going to have trash service in a couple of years because this number just doesn't take care of it. They're, we're talking, we're asking them to go three years out.
Without making profit.
Without making a profit. And so I, I think, I'm just concerned about the whole thing.
I don't think that's, I'm sorry. I'm not sure if that's accurate. He just said in twenty twenty-three, he'd be making profit or at least breaking even at eighteen thirty-nine. So I feel like our number of, there might be a miscalculation somewhere in there. And, and you can tell me, Matt, am I?
Yeah, right around that number of break even, right around eighteen fifty-ish right there, just break even price right now in the numbers. Um, so as long as nothing changes, right?
Okay. Right. But that's why we're looking at it every January is, is for the, there's all, you know, we're looking at the CPI every January. But I just, I didn't want to, when we're looking at raising the rates on our citizens, to assume they're going in the hole. As in Jan- uh, January, the rate at eighteen thirty-nine, if we do this right now, you guys are going in the hole. At that point, you're not going in the hole. Are you going in the hole now?
So the goal is obviously like we discussed before, we want to keep the relationships, we want to be more powerful, obviously. Rather than jump off an increase. So instead of nineteen ninety-seven, that's the number today. So our goal is to eventually get to the number we can get to by twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Really, really, we're in profit margin. It's obviously, you know, take a few years to get there, but we want to invest. This is our only municipality that we have. We're here, we're a city. So we want to, we want to continue to do that. And so that's why we're willing to take that risk and make that happen. So that is correct.
Just for the record, I know I've been talking about profitability, but I'm really uncomfortable about talking about us gearing our rates to their profitability. And so, um, and I want them profitable. That's the American dream. That's what everybody, that's all of us are working for profit. And nobody asks me what I make when I sell an insurance policy. It's not fair to do that as much as, so I'm really uncomfortable with this whole discussion about.
I really disagree with that. Just when we're adjusting our contract rate based on them saying they're going in the hole. I mean, this is where we've got to do our diligence for our consumer. We went under contract for our citizens, on behalf of our citizens. It seems like we need to at least make sure when we're doing, and I'm not saying it's not validated, not justified. We want to make, we want to take care of our companies here. But when we're looking at, instead of a one and a half percent increase and almost thirteen percent, and then five percent, and then another five percent, and then another five percent. We should be asking some serious questions. And I don't think that that's out of line at all.
Oh, I don't think asking questions are out of line. We also got this quote in a totally different economic environment. Phenomenally different. All of us are, are spending hundreds, maybe thousands of dollars a month that we weren't spending twenty-four months ago. And so it's a really irritating conversation to have because of the policies of, in the world situation and so forth. So it is a frustrating conversation to have. And, and the rate increases are frustrating to discuss. I do think. I think we've put a Band-Aid on a shark bait, on a shark bite in this situation.
I, I would note, I would note three things here is, is, so, so we really have a few different uh, decision points here. But one thing I would note, you know, you, you're, I mean, I'm going to pick on them a little bit, right? They, they issued the bit, you know, they, they submitted their proposal, right? So that's the proposal they did. But if we didn't have their proposal, if we had gone with one of the others, we would, I mean, we, we would be much higher than that today, right? So, uh, you know, we, we do have that. We really have the, here's our decision points. We, we really have, one decision point is, is a rate adjustment now. Uh, you know, do we make a rate relative to what we pay to them, right? So, so, so is there a justified rate adjustment in what we pay our vendor? Right? And I can tell you, we're paying other vendors more than we used to pay them for the same product. So that's one decision. The, the, the other decision point, which doesn't have to be made tonight, I don't think. Is this, what, what should the terms be around future rate adjustments, right? So the five percent's a max. So, you know, if they came in at eight, you know, if it's eight percent inflation every year and we give them five. To some respects, they might be in the same spot, right? Because they're going to get behind, as you said, and never catch up. So is that even the right for me? I mean, should there be a cap or is that the right? I, I mean, I, I think that's another decision. And then the third one really is, what do we charge the customer in our building? I mean, you know, some cities, you know, I mean, we, we could charge half price if we chose to. But we have to make up that difference somewhere along the way, right? And, and so what's the appropriate way to do it is we should fully recover the cost of service, right? Any, anytime we make a utility fund, water, sewer, gas, electric, whatever those are that a city might provide. We should, we, we should recover our costs and ensure that we have a, an appropriate cash balance for the unexpected, the rainy day. Separate and apart from each other. Sewer separate from garbage, separate from whatever other funds we have. So those are really are, you know, we don't have to make a decision tonight or even the rest of this year as it relates to changing the rate for the customer. What we're saying is likely we would have to make some transfer by end of year to solidify the solid waste fund. It could be from the general fund. It could be from the sewer fund. It could be, if you're right, it's going to, it's going to require some type of a transfer. Assuming we're, you know, anywhere near that fifteen percent uh, rate right now of uncollected. So again, I would just say, we have a decision on, do we, do we, do we agree to a rate adjustment this year? Do we want to have further discussion about what our future rate adjustment should be? And I think in the budget process, we can discuss what the impacts are to the rate to the customer. To me, those are kind of our three buckets of decision. And probably the most important one relative to tonight and to this discussion. What should that adjustment be? You have one proposal. You've had, you know, discussions about, you know, is it profitable for them seventeen fifty-two? And it sounds like the answer is it's not, but the other side, they're willing to say, uh, we want to work towards the future.
And just some other, just context is based on, you know, my observations of the kind of budgeting philosophy around solid waste. Is we keep those margins pretty razor thin in order to, to keep costs to the residents and the utility customers down as low as they possibly can be. There's no transfer from the solid waste fund to the general fund, like another organization's for, you know, because every once in a while, we got to admin, it's not, it's certainly a lot less than it was with our previous service provider, but there is some administrative work that, that we do to administer the service. There's no transfer from the solid waste fund to any of the street funds, even though trash trucks and heavy trucks provide a lot of wear and tear on the streets. But the philosophy from this body in the past has always been to keep those costs as low as we possibly can to the end user. And that is that, you know, that's a, that's a, an opportunity cost there where, you know, we're, we're keeping those costs down for, for trash service to the customer. But those fees are only, they're in and out, like I mentioned in that fund. They're not going to support to, to help repair roads, trash trucks drive on or back to the general fund to possibly, you know, keep, you know, uh, those as another source of revenue to offset the cost and labor associated with the staff time administering the contract. We just don't do that, which a lot of communities do. And I'm not saying that we need to change that. I'm just saying that's a, you know, from a budget philosophy in the solid waste fund, that's been the, the kind of marching orders that we've got to keep those, that our primary objective is to keep that end user cost down from a billing perspective. Even though they may see some of the possible implications of those low costs in other areas in the street repairs and admin costs and things like that. But that's again, just another context as to how the solid waste fund budget comes together.
Zach, I just want to comment. I appreciate your hard work on this. This is difficult. At some point, when you think about making any increases to our citizens, but when you think about what Matt does for our, for our community and his team about taking care of the trash and getting it out of here. Those rates from waste management are, are set and they can do what they want to do. They, they own, they own the only landfill in the area. So they, they have that kind of monopoly on that, on the trash. And I, I think the most important thing here too, is we communicate to our citizens about the pricing increase. We, we all live, we all see it. When we go to the restaurant, we see the, the changes, the, what COVID's done to us. And so the price of fuel, we all live with that. And I, I don't think your current plan that you brought to us is uncompletely unreasonable at all with, you know, two or three dollars extra a month. This increase, I think my concern is making sure that our citizens are completely aware of the increase for twenty twenty-three. And thereafter, whether it's three percent, five percent, or whatever, you know, we figured out that to be. And I don't think Matt is unreasonable when it comes with, with what he's asking and what you've guys come up with.
And this gives us that, to your point, that lead time. If, if the decision is ultimately made not to adjust rates mid-year and to, to cover that deficit with other means, then it gives us that six, seven months to tell that story and communicate that, that change.
I think what bothered me, and it should bother all of us, that is that ten percent or fourteen percent delinquency. I think we need, we need to try to figure out how we fix that. And I know we'll, we'll always have them, but how do we fix that? I mean, do we, you know, I know you probably give them a leeway of two or three or four or five, six months, whatever that is. But I think that's what we should be talking about in one of our meetings about whether we pull their dumpsters. You know, what stopped their service altogether if they're not paying the bill.
And we're essentially at that point now. So just to give you some history on how we've handled delinquency in the past is a lot of people just would let their trash service go unpaid for a year. And then that amount, this is prior to twenty eighteen, we made changes to the billing structure, that amount would be assessed to their property taxes. So in essence, we would get paid, but it would be a year and a half after the services are already rendered. And after we, as a, as a city, as an organization, paid those costs. And that's when the solid waste really started to, to, you know, we had twenty, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand in that fund, and that just kept.
And that sounds like a lot of work for you and, and staff for figuring that out and, you know.
Twenty eighteen, we made the change. So we're, or, or at, at the end of twenty eighteen, I should say, so we made that change uh, in the billing structure from by, from quarterly to every other month. And it's at the end of twenty eighteen, when we kind of noticed, oh, people are still doing this, we're, we're, we're coming up upside down because people are paying until they pay their property taxes, which is several months after we pay the bill.
Yeah.
The decision at that time was, we're, all right, we're going to give folks two billing cycles. If they, if they are, have not made any payments at all in two billing cycles, then we, we made changes from, or in the standpoint that we can send them to a third-party collection agency. The intent at that time was to initiate a, a more aggressive, you know, collections process in the first quarter of twenty twenty. And that's, if, if everybody knows, when the whole world went upside down and it was, we were, we were not comfortable in moving forward with aggressive collect, third-party collections. Sending people to collections with so many, when the global financial, if it's bad, and local financial situation was just in such a crazy state. So now that, you know, we've righted ourselves in that aspect, we'll be, you know, I made the point earlier about it's, uh, looking at the most recent bill collection data is a little bit off because it, that the liquidity rate's much smaller. But that's, I think a lot of it was because people, we were sent, starting to send those notices out that you need to get something set up or going to send you collecting. So we got an influx of those. So we're hoping that, that, we've got payment plans set up with a lot of our delinquent accounts. It wasn't, we don't, we've noticed them and made them aware. We reserve this right to send you collections. We will send you the collections. So I think, and then at that point, it kind of gets it off our books and, and, you know, the third, the collection agency is collecting it for us. But I agree with your point that getting that, that's really the only area of the cost that we can control. And we don't really have that much control of it, but where, where we can have some strategies in place to, to lower that delinquency.
Zach, what is the cost of that?
Cost of.
The third party.
So they don't get paid anything unless they, they've never got paid anything. So that's, it's a.
Pay them to do that?
We don't, they get paid based on, so if you get sent to a collections agency, you owe the city what you owe. And then I can't remember, I don't have the contrary in front of me right now, but some percentage above that that you pay to the collection. So it doesn't, I mean, it's essentially a break even.
Zach and Matt, I really don't believe that the two, three, you know, two to three dollar increase per month. You know, and whether it's three or five percent next year is completely, I think it's acceptable, very acceptable. We just need to communicate to our citizens that that's going to happen well in advance. It is not like we have a ton of options. I mean, we truly don't. We're, we're blessed to have Matt and his team here with us. So I think we do need to take care of that local business that takes care of us.
And to the point the city manager made earlier about, we have data as far as what the other firms who, if we were in a worst case situation, we needed to go out for bid again. We know what that came in twenty twenty and it's probably going to be more than that.
Yeah.
And so the cost. Increases to deal with. I mean, so the, so you're going to have to, they're going to be thirty percent higher.
Yeah.
Or twenty percent higher, whatever the number is.
Right.
I, I agree with Councilmember Scott in that it's, when you think about a hundred and fifty households in this city are delinquent. It just seems gargantuan. And, and that to me is one of the major problems.
Yeah.
Council, I think we can help with that. So we, we service a lot of H U A communities where we run into the same situation. And now I know it's a different demographic, but they still have a, a little bit of a deliquid. I don't know, five percent, six percent, somewhere in that range. And we usually see that drops to one, two percent, two percent or zero because we stop picking up the trash. So we use the software where our drivers have every address on the tablet. So if you guys give us a list and say, hey, a hundred homes do not pick them up, we won't pick those homes up. So what are those homes going to do? They're now going to call the city and say, my trash hasn't been picked up. At that time, now you can tell them what your trash is. So a lot of those folks can pay at that time. So I think we can help the city and recoup some of those calls.
I think we, I think we definitely try that route.
Can we start implementing that?
Tomorrow.
If we're talking about this in.
Matt, you're the man.
I think that would be, I don't know if we need to do a policy.
No, I mean, there's not really, I mean, that just wasn't an option we had with our previous service provider that they could, A, that we could rely on them to B, if we tell them an address and not pick up, that it wouldn't just get serviced anyway. Um, but.
Have you done that before? Is there any success for that?
Yeah.
Are people going to go that way or are they going to just try and work out the number?
Great question. Like I said, it's a different, different demographic in some of the communities that we're in, but we see a dramatic change. Because you got, you don't want that stinky trash, right? And so we're not going to leave the trash outside of the container. And I think that's what Zach goes to the point of, that forces people to recycle. But when trash is outside that container, that's extra. So now it's going to cost you three dollars a bag if you want us to pick that up. So that forces people, I don't want to spend an extra fifty bucks just to get my trash picked up. Let me pay my bill and let's move forward. So I, I really think it will.
And if we have six months to, to implement kind of these more, rather than, you know, we've got two tracks where we can say, if you don't pay, we're going to send you a collection and you're not going to get serviced. And six months to communicate that, you know, at the end of the year. This is spitballing, but if we go from ten percent estimated delinquency rate to three percent delinquency rate, that's obviously going to have an impact on. that's obviously going to have an impact on what we're recommending from a rate perspective in 2023.
We have 150 homes that are delinquent. That's $27,963 at 1550 a month. It's not 16. And that's.
No, I mean, you're, you're, I, I think you're, all the points are dead on. I, I mean, I think you do have to be, I think you have to have a step-up process.
Right.
Using, hey, okay, you got behind a month. Life hits you, we want to work with you, let's make it happen to, hey, it's been two cycles, you're not responding to us. We're sending this collection agency, you know, and then we're moving towards stopping track. I think you do have to be cautious in probably our area a little more that you might see an increase in illegal dumping. I, I think where you have well-developed neighborhoods, you probably see less of it than you do. I'm already kind of on, on the road out there and, you know, that. Or I start using my neighbor's containers, right? Now, generally, again, I'm going to say in, in a developed neighborhood, neighbors pretty quickly catch on to that. Go, hey, why are you putting your trash over my trash all the time? I don't like that. Quit doing it, right? And the neighbor kind of did, but sometimes as you get more rural, I, I just having worked in both, I, I think you do see an increase. And that's not to say that you should not remove their garbage containers because any business, right? If you, if you come get my service and you don't pay me, I'm not going to continue to give you my service, right? I'm a plumber and you keep calling me to come work and you don't pay your bills and your toilet keep backing up. Well, pretty soon you're just going to have a backed-up toilet and that's just how your life's going to work. So I do think there are things along those ways that, again, I think over the last two years, there was probably a little more leniency than we would have probably liked in a perfect world. And we've somewhat ran into this next phase of, of issues and trying to figure out what's the best way. It, it, you know, it's, we've, in a transition period.
Do we have?
Zach and his team's doing a good job to try to push those numbers down.
Do we have the ability now for somebody to set up an auto payment, plug in their information, just have it drawn every month?
Noel, we don't have it to where they can set up their own. They'd have to call and set up an automatic.
Call you?
Call the city staff, correct? You, you can have auto pay, but the city needs to set that up. Right. I mean, that's a, that's another, I mean, to, to that point, we could definitely make some investments into the online billing software that we have now, which is not very user-friendly.
Well, we don't want to invest more than we collect.
Well, right, yeah.
So it depends on what it would cost.
Right, right. Well, I mean, I, I just mean there's room for improvement in that area.
It, it's an item on our kind of to-do list.
But I know that, you know, sometimes you, if you're not set up on auto payment, life gets away from you. You're two, three months behind. It's crap.
Is that paperless too?
Is, you can be, you have to, when you call and set up an account with the city, you can tell us you want to go paperless with your billing. And that's just, that's doesn't, all that means is your bill is emailed to you and you could still write a check and send it to us. But it's a savings for us because we're not, we're not generating the, the postage or the thing that actually sent down. Uh, we've, it's been, it's increased, not a ton. I want to say we have less than 150 addresses that do paperless, paperless billing.
Save a lot of money.
One of our other challenges, it's just how we're, we're set up, right? So some of it gets to where people in the move-in, move-out process, where some of our delinquency happens. Because when you're the city that provides the water service, people always come to you to get their water turned off. When you're not the, not the organization that provides the water service, it's a little more challenging to make sure we have the data that somebody new has moved in or moved out. If they don't call us, we don't know that. So we find it out because when we get the water report, so we get BPU sends us a water report. That gives us turn-on, turn-off information, right? So a customer's chain, but we're always, right, that's always going to be behind. And so some of our challenges in the past has also been around, you know, I'm living there, I move away. I'm billing, you know, and I'm getting a bill. I'm going, I moved out a month ago or two months. And now somebody new moves in and the containers are there, they just start putting them out. And, you know, the garbage, the guy driving the garbage truck goes, there's a container. I don't have anything. Tell me not to pick it up. I pick it up. So some of it's that transitional piece there too, that we just have to work, continue to work on. But it, it does create some of our delinquencies around that transition period. And, and getting the former residents to pay. Now, the way the housing market's been now, there's not any, there's very little delay times, so that may not happen quite as much. But you do have some of that delay between customer A and customer B. And especially if they're properties where they're traditionally a property to a rapid move-in, move-out.
And so will you remind us, Mike, for tonight?
Yeah.
Because I think we, there's a lot we can discuss here and, and there's a lot to maneuver. And for sure, our delinquent rates are something that need honed in on. But for tonight, what is it exactly that we need to move forward with or, or what are the recommendations there?
So the, the recommendation as it relates to the agenda item tonight would be to approve the contract addendum included in the packet, which would, as far as, as far as an immediate change, would only guarantee the increase from 1552 to 1752, starting in June. And it includes the provision that they can increase up to 5% increases with the provision of certain metrics and data indicators at the end of the year to support an up to 5% increase in those rates.
And those would be, those 5% would be, have to be approved by the city council?
That's, I mean, yeah.
We, yeah, we can bring those to.
And it is also the, the additional bulky item.
Correct, yes.
So those, that's what's in the staff recommendation. I think that's the preferred, but if, you know, if there's still uncertainty about some piece of this, I think the most immediate issue is, you know, adjusting the current rate by this $2 rate increase to our vendor. You know, and I'm going to say this, and it's a little, you know, i- if a CPI is not the mechanism we want to look at, if you want to do it as a fixed rate, right? So I, yet I was just talking to Matt, I mean, I, I think you're still going to be behind. You know, you could say, okay, for the next three years, we're going to do a 75 cent or a dollar increase and, and you know what it is, right? So everybody, everybody knows what the number is, uh, and it makes it easy to plan around. But it may or may not be in keeping, you know, may or may not be in keeping with the market's doing. So you could, it's kind of like when we do fixed pilots, right? I mean, the benefit of a fixed pilot is I know for the next 10 years what my taxes are going to be and what they're going to go up. And if values go down, it's good for the city. If values go up a whole lot, well, then we probably, but it's a fixed.
And that was similar to what we had before with the one and a half percent.
Right, so it's very fixed, so.
So tonight, we could potentially vote for the additional $2 to be paid by the city and then figure out the details for the incremental changes at a later date.
I mean, if there's not comfort with what's proposed, yes.
Okay.
If, if there's some, something else she wants to do. I mean, I, I think the most immediate need is this rate adjustment.
Which is the 16,000 that we're thinking it's going to be. And then, and it picked up from our sewer fund to the solid waste fund. So our citizens don't see that impact, correct?
We're not proposing to adjust, so, so there's two B. What are we paying our vendor? So we're paying them 1552. If you approve, we'll just say 1752, then we would, a contract adjustment would be to adjust that rate. The house count's the house count, we, I mean, we.
Yeah.
However many units it are, is the unit. So it's going to go up, change, whatever. The, what we charge to the end customer, that is a decision. We're saying that we would not recommend an adjustment to the customer for 2022.
Yeah.
What we do for 2023 will be addressed in the budget process. So.
Okay.
All the councils that we're doing is just wanting to make that $2 adjustment for address charges that we are paying.
Right.
And we would need to come back for additional addendums that fills out the level of increases outward in the contract. We have a single addendum brought to the council at some later date that would detail that increase.
Yeah, if there's not company. Now, the current contract, right, so the current contract has one and a half percent. We're not suggesting that goes away, right?
Under that, under this scenario, if I'm capturing correctly, we would adjust that 1772, 1552, 1752, effective for the June billing. The escalator in the contract was remade, that went from part of the 5% till we come back with additional addendum. If the council's uncomfortable with.
Right.
Yeah.
Your strike can be, is that correct?
Basically, yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But override. And I, I think that may be the wisest at this point, because if diesel goes a 650 a gallon, you're coming back. And, and so we, none of us can predict the future at this point.
I think there.
We want to be good partners with our good partner. So I, I feel uncomfortable about making any future predictions at this point in time. And although I know that you were, you were generous, you took it on the chin, on the short end, so that we could ease into it. So, and I, I don't think we've really solved the problem. We haven't solved the problem. That's, that's the real problem. We haven't solved it.
Yeah.
Um, and so the two boxes, just putting a Band-Aid on a shark bite. And, and so without a future strategy and a, and a partnership with our partners, uh, that they have something to count on and budget and, and, and using their business plan.
I, I, I think it makes sense, I mean, to me, to, to do the best for our vendor and for our citizens is to approve this amendment to the contract, current contract. And then we come back November, December and discuss, see what happens. You'll know more, Mark, for 2023, if that's, if that's reasonable to, for you, Zach. Discuss that rate increase, if it, if, whether it's 1.5 or 5 or 10.
Make sure it gets captured. Um, we would be coming back to the council and, and, in any circumstances at the end of the year to discuss whatever can, can, if it's five, if it's 5% or if it's nebulous and still needs to be decided, we would still be coming back to you at the end of the year for some final confirmation on that. So this, all this, if we were just to move forward with 1772, that would set that baseline. We wouldn't have the 5% goalpost at the end of the year. That goalpost setting would kind of still be up in the air that we would cite at that time when we have more months worth of data. So it could, the only reason I, I bring that up is it could be, we could be looking at more than 5%.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I don't, I personally don't want to remove the 5% because that's, that's what everything's been calculated on.
That's the, that's really the protection for us, as far as.
I agree. Yeah, but it, it, it gets more room in, in our crazy environment, economic environment that we have for the, for the partner. So I, I would, I would like to make a motion that we adopt, whatever, what is it?
Addendum number two.
Addendum number two, as written in its entirety. Striking to 45 and making it $30 on the end of RDA.
Correct.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Hey, motion number, or item number seven, consider the acquisition of updated in-car video cameras for Edwardsville Police Department.
Followed by Captain Short up to the high proposal presentation, pretending as the project manager. And as you remember from the car shop, he was listed as the program manager for a number of things that we fire repaired, so.
Evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Um, tonight I'm coming to you to request monies for an acquisition of new in-car video cameras. Uh, the total dollars sum is $34,392. The impact on the budget, uh, per our request is zero because we're requesting that the monies come straight from the previously issued CARES Act monies. We've been working with this same product since 2014. And the technology we have, we are happy with. It's just that it's old and the, the items came to us with a five-year warranty. And just like any other technology or system that you have, it grows old and becomes outdated over time. These devices are exposed to all kinds of weather conditions, hot and cold, which isn't favorable for any kind of electronic equipment. So moving on, these items have just become less reliable over time. And we have invested in these devices because we rely on them to support investigations, protect our officers from liability, protect the city. It's just a good investment and we're comfortable with what we have. We just, like I said, need eight new systems to outfit our fleet. And, um, it's, it's practical, um, the impact is little and it's a turnkey program, quite honestly. We're removing camera systems to include all the wiring, all the included hardware. And it's going to be a seamless transition. We've worked with this company, Digital Ally, like I said, since 2014. And, uh, they've improved their services to the degree that they have included installation services just in Lenexa, which is an easy, easy spot for us to get to. It makes administration of it pretty seamless because we're using the same backend program for our management purposes. Um, and we're sticking with what we have been working with. So really, it's a seamless transition. It's just the right time and it's necessary. So our recommendation is that we approve the monies in the amount of $34,392 and, uh, we'll use it wisely.
What is the lifetime?
I'm sorry?
What is the lifetime of?
Well, it's the, it's the same proposal. It's the same five-year warranty. Anything that fails within that time period, we are up for new equipment. We're not getting refurbished items. So some things failed before then, but like I say, we're protected in that way. To include with, um, this package, um, they're buying our old equipment because their program does include refurbished items. So say you don't have the funding to put in a new system in your fleet. They say, hey, you know, we have these good items that we have trouble shop repaired, so on, so forth. We will sell that to you at a reduced cost with a limited warranty and there's your options. So, uh, we're, we want to stay away from that because it's just, it's just not reliable anymore and, um, it's time to move forward.
Will that offset the $34,000 if they buy our old equipment?
That's included, so it's about a $3,000 offset. You know, we, we can't do anything with it, you know, so you're kind of at their mercy. And quite honestly, it's pretty generous, I, you know, it's good business.
So Jeff, is that Digital Ally, or is that a prioritized system then?
Proprietary.
Yeah, I think.
It is, it is. Um, so we've implemented, um, automatic uploading technology, right? And it is proprietary. We need to stick, um, with their devices to make it all continue to run seamless.
And it works fine with, you know, sharing information with KCK, back and forth, that information.
We actually, we actually don't share digital information with them as it relates to, to video. The only sharing that we do with this system is with a DA's office. Um, and that's a completely different process. But as far as electronically, the transmission of the electronic files, it's seamless. We have, if you, if you ever look at the police department, you'll see what are called antennas, okay? And they are on the east side and north side of the police department where the cars are parked. And when the cars pull up within range, they detect signal and the files literally upload. And they go up in the air, wherever they go, and they travel into our storage device, which we have invested in. And, um, it's, no, it's not cloud-based, anything. It's the hardware device that we've invested in. And we retain our, uh, memory and our evidence onsite and manage it that way. It's more protected.
And Chief, this money is already in there. There's no increase anywhere to the citizens at all.
Not to the general fund, but it's similar to the cap. It's, uh, Mr. Webb and I worked together and, uh, we looked through the budget and, and this CARES money was parked in that reserve fund. We talked about that grants fund, uh, was part of the CARES Act where there's some other ARPA money or some, some program money in there as well. But, but this was kind of set aside.
Okay.
Public safety equipment and reimbursement, I presume, uh, for public safety salaries back in that time. But this is approved purchase for that. So it's not, we're authorized to use the money in this way, should you so decide. So, uh, it's not, we're authorized to use the money in this way, should you so decide.
It, it basically become, we, we had to support CARES Act, right? We did that through basically, uh, in our case, we used five. We had some things with purchase during all that time, right? Mask gloves, all those kinds of things. We had a certain amount of costs that were direct costs that got reimbursed. And, uh, the remainder we supported as the act allowed you to utilize public safety salaries. You just had to, you had to show those. In our case, we utilized fire department. So it was around eleven percent of total fire department salaries for that, I think, twenty twenty. And then to basically keep these funds segmented from just the general fund, we left them in what we call a grant fund. We have a number of subdivisions in there, this being one of them, which allows this body to operate expenditure. Really, any matter now, because we justify it to federal, those funds are available. But we mainly targeted things such as, we're talking about whether it's the CAF, the cameras, uh, maybe other technologies with that public safety grant department. But all of those have to be backed.
Perfect.
We have sufficient funding in there. Trying to get the, the total, I figured the number would go up. We had approximately two hundred thousand past that. So, uh, we have sufficient funding.
Perfect. Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve and authorize the acquisition of in-car video recording equipment from Digital Ally in a total amount of thirty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars.
Second?
Great, we have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
All right, City Manager report.
Mr. Chair, I don't really have any, uh, any, uh, additional comments or any further questions.
Ms. Dionne? Uh, Chief Mathis?
Thank you.
Chief, what? Dustin? Zach? All right, Councilman Nada?
Um, I wanted to share some information with everybody. I made extra copies, so there's some for staff here too. Like this past week, last week, on, uh, the Total Transportation Policy Committee in, uh, for Mark, there are a couple of things that happened, I think, that we need to bring to the, to the forefront. One is, this is just to let you know that our staff is always working, uh, behind the scenes, preparing for the future. And you'll see that, that three of the local roads were reclassified. Uh, two, two of them as major collectors and one as a minor collector, which makes them eligible for federal funding in the future. So it's just a strategic move so that in the future, should we have a project on these particular roadways, that they are, they, they can be submitted to Mark for, uh, on, in their various committees for reimbursement and, and so forth. So I really want to commend Mike, because I know this was not easy. I think the D O, uh, K D O, uh, KDOT had some questions that they had and you had an extra meeting, uh, with them. And that, so these were actually handled separately from all the other metropolitan area, um, reclassifications. So I want to commend you and your staff for your extra work on that and what it takes to prepare for the future.
I'd have to, I'd have to give, uh, our public works director and our planner both really drove that process.
Great.
Really kept it on.
And it's all, and, and it's an important thing. So that, that happened at the last meeting. Uh, we had a couple of presentations in the meeting and it's, it's become more and more important that bike lanes, trails for walking and biking and bus stops be included in future road projects. That they are part of the scoring for future projects. And, uh, there's another presentation on the next bullet point down by the Center for Accelerating Innovation, which I didn't even know existed, but it's kind of an interesting group of people looking into the future on what transport, what, what technologies can be used in transportation and, and roadways and, uh, basically about anything. There's grants given by this organization for implementation of ideas and also of, of furthering or, or incubating ideas. So it's kind of a neat organization. So, um, on the bottom there, for our consideration of the future, I, after talking with the bike share people, it might be something that we think about as we were redeveloping the city hall area, the, the public works and the public safety is to maybe have a, a bike share hub, which would be real close to the densely populated area. It will also help if they lived in the, in, in this part of town, they could get to work out at the, uh, at our industrial park faster than walking and not relying on a fixed, uh, fixed track. So that'd be one. And the other would be they could use it for recreation to ride on the, on the, on the, uh, pathways that we have on the streets and so forth. It might be a nice addition for our citizens. Do you know, Mike, if, if our trails allow bikes at the present time?
Yes.
Okay, you know specifically they do?
Our trails, yeah. So our trails are built to multiple purpose, right?
And our ordinances are in agreement with that?
We don't allow motorized vehicles.
Right.
But I know some bicycles are now considered, uh, power assisted.
Yeah, like the electric bikes? Would that be against our ordinance?
I'd have to double check it, but most of the places have taken the position that that's not a motorized vehicle. Yeah.
Okay, doesn't meet. Yeah. You know, just, you know, I keep talking with bike share people, just, I thought, you know, that might be kind of a nice thing to have here in Edwardsville. Just in something where people could go to work or they could ride around or they could, you know, they could be at the other end of town or ride, go to the post office or whatever. They're kind of a neat deal and the way they monitor them is, is rather, it was fascinating, the mechanics behind keeping track of all the bikes and recharging them and, and so forth. The other thing is I really encourage us to, to, in the future, any kind of roadways that we have, that we look to all of these as possibilities, like the bike lanes, the trails and the bus stops. And maybe bike hubs if it gets to that, you know, on the north end or something like that, as density increases up there. So anyway, that's, that's really what came out of that meeting. I thought there were some important parts that would really benefit everybody. There are, on the back of the sheet, there is, uh, there's links to the Accelerating Innovation website. Modernizing mitigation is a, that was a very interesting, uh, presentation. And then the Reich, uh, Ride KC Bike dot com. So those are all resources that I think, I know we've used in the past when we developed roads and, and looked to that. Because scoring is always, scoring for projects is always on the move. And it's moving more towards other types of things other than just vehicle, traffic on highways. So anyway, that's for your perusal.
I think that raises one of the, one of our goals and it's a timing and it may be worth utilizing outside research. Is to adopt, so it's complete street policy, which really talks to how streets are used from motor vehicles to bicycles to walkings, to public transit, et cetera. So we don't have any formal policy and, and, and a bit of work already been done out there. Something probably needs to go through the planning commission. Staff, you know, time to, time to put this together. Really, it really addresses that and quite honestly, all, all transportation funding pretty much says, do you have a complete street policy? And will this project meet that policy? Doesn't mean you have to have every component of, of a policy, but, you know, if you just build a road, you're likely, the funding is probably not just, you might be able to make applications which would score. I think that would be, thank you.
That's all I have.
Councilman Bishop?
I have just two things. Dusty, Hundred and Ten Street, have you any feedback from state yet?
We, uh, we, we sent a letter after the last meeting. I, I reached out to the different one engineer, uh, Mr. Colin. He sent me an email on, I tried to call him several times. We didn't connect. He stated that he had a letter had been drafted to the mayor. I'll tell you, my response was, thank you very much for wrapping the letter to the mayor. The question is, what are you going to do to correct the problem?
And I haven't received a letter.
Yeah, I, I, I expect it to come to this address, but, uh, I have not seen anything either electronically. Soon as we get it, we will.
The grass over the sidewalk.
Yeah. Hey, uh, Chief, when, uh, how's Avery Hotchkiss Foundation going?
I would say pretty good. It's getting ready to make a transfer over to Johnson County Community College Foundation because we raised well over a sustainable amount. Johnson County Community College calls ten thousand dollars. Right now, we're getting ready to do a E F T for right over thirteen thousand, a couple hundred bucks to Johnson County Community College. So they will be able to issue out based upon what the market value is at this stage. That fund should be self-sustained for a period of time, if it will be on four, five years.
Great.
Um, the way the market is going at this stage, they'll really issue out two scholarships a year based on what the returns were for last year. It'll last for about twenty years. Mom and Dad have identified they're going to make another larger contribution, uh, from insurance policy that they have. We have to include any other fundraising that we do, we just see here, up here, the self-sustaining, uh, policies on board. So like I said, right now, we're over thirteen thousand dollars.
Wow, that's great. Good job. Thanks. That's all I got.
Councilman Malot?
Dustin, twenty-five words or less report on the silent crossing progress.
They were supposed to be posted page on the school Friday. Some items we refused last week. We can't. They're all going to be done by the end of May.
And then the sinkhole that's up there by the post office, is that getting addressed?
Yes.
Okay. I just was, I'm, I'm really excited about the progress that's being made. It just really looks good now. It looked like they're moving to the south side of the track. Anyway, that's good. You're never here.
Oh, okay.
You're working with a teething baby, I'm sure.
That's right.
Twenty-five words or less on roof repairs on city hall.
Be in the day.
Curious. Uh, I wanted to comment on the, uh, the discussions that were had tonight on the solid waste. And I, it's just a pleasure to hear these discussions and this dialect on this council up here. The concerns for the citizens and for the pricing. I agree with everybody that whatever everybody said. I know we're going to have to pay our dues eventually. I was the one that asked at the one meeting how, what the percentage was and they said twenty-five percent. And I was shocked when I heard that. And I think that a lot of credit goes to the waste management and, and Zach and Mike on working out the progress on, on making this work. So I just wanted to say that it's a pleasure to hear that with this council.
We'll give the credit to Casey Disposal.
Yes.
That's what I meant.
I won't say anything further than that.
No, that's, you can cut that part in. I think that they do an excellent job and, you know, they're really dependable. I just wanted to make that comment about this council. It's a pleasure to be here.
Councilman Shriver?
I'll add a few comments. Um, I think Casey Disposal has been a great business partner to work with. Um, I do know we are elected here by the residents to be their voice and look out for them, knowing full well the economy where it is right now. I, um, I do feel like, um, like I said, they've been a great business partner to work with and I don't think it's too outrageous. I, I know, um, they've got to look out for themselves. We've got to look out for the citizens, like Councilmember Adams said, like putting a Band-Aid on a shark. We don't know what the economy is going to be like next year or two years. So to make these decisions, it's, it's a, it's a tough road or it's a tough, it's a tough decision up here. But, um, I don't think it's too outrageous. It's a necessary evil we have to have. And being the, the other companies that gave us the bids, those, we would have been higher than these right now. So I think it was maybe one of the better decisions we made. Um, the Edwardsville Community Fund. I'm glad this finally got put together. Why we haven't had it, I don't know. Um, but I think I want to give, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, thanks to Mayor Kayheart. I think it was her idea, if I'm not correct.
Mike's idea, I just.
Oh.
Um, very persistent.
You pushed it, you pushed it. Yes. So I think that's going to be a, um, a wonderful fund that we have. Back to our Casey Disposal, I think what we did collect out of that discussion too is the concern of our delinquencies. So I don't know what we can do about that, but that is a, that's a great concern. And here we're, I raise the rate. So I don't know what we could do as a community, as a city. I think you've changed your policies or changed some strategies there, but it's a shame that that goes on and. So, um, one more thing to Dusty on Hundred and Ten, that pole, the electrical line, that pole that I talked to you about? Oh, it's bone? It just looks like it's hanging on by one screw though. So it's supposed to be, oh.
A piece of rope.
Who's supposed to be fixing that or who?
Next time you're after a cat, you'll find out.
I'm surprised this wind didn't break down. It's been like that for several months.
Utility company not responsible for.
Pardon me?
Goes to the house.
Right.
So, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. It looks extremely dangerous. Thank you.
I'll make a couple of calls and see. The other side of that question, maybe two of us, we can get some action.
Thank you. That's all.
Councilman Scott?
The right KC plus for Edwardville? You know, I'm excited about that for our citizens. I think that'll be a, a need deal for them and give them an option, uh, as well. But, um, I, I just can't stress enough that we need to make sure we get that information out to our citizens somehow, some way, so they're aware of the, that option. And then where that pickup and drop off is going to be, I don't think I've seen anything yet on that.
We have, we actually have a meeting, uh, pitched from the county, right, Friday, KDOT, who's the grant, you know, grant agency, uh, wine dot E D C, maybe some of the business park officials. And then we also have coming up, it's known as the Business Park Roundtable. It's done once, it's done several times, but once a year, the city is part of that process specifically. And so I think it'll be more information from those two meetings.
First, thank you. Just the more information we get out to our citizens? Yeah. You know, the newsletter, the emails work really well. I like that. How's the sanitary assurer survey coming?
Uh, they have, I think they're estimating two hundred ninety-five manholes. They surveyed seventy-seven of those. But they're not going to be quite that many either. We don't. So it's coming along. And then that was the day they're actually doing the inspection now too. They went through, survey through, and now they're following up with the inspection.
And that's B H C roads, you know, with this?
Yeah.
Okay, first, first, just stay on top of it.
It's going well. There's bugs and that's been worked out with any type of that.
That'll be beneficial for, for us as we grow, you know, what we have and what we don't have. Just lastly, uh, Zach, again, I appreciate your presentation.
Just lastly, uh, Zach, again, I appreciate your presentation, uh, with Casey Disposal, and I know you have a lot of time with that. Um, I just really appreciate you giving us the data that we needed. Um, and, and I think collectively, city staff and us, we can work together to try to lower that delinquency number, however we, you know, decide to do that. But I think we all agree that that is, uh, a hundred and forty citizens is too many to not be paying that service that they're getting. And it's a darn good service that they're getting. I'm getting the same service I like. Um, so we need to make sure, we need to do what we can in this room. We'll, uh, take care of Casey's bill. I know we're paying, we're paying that bill regardless of if we're getting it or not, but, uh, we just need to promote that sign. I vote for having a vote for our chief over there.
Always six thirty or so.
Pull their dumpster, but that's, that's all I find out.
Sounds, sounds more like code enforcement officer.
Yeah. Yeah, probably. Probably. Thank you all for working on that. Needed to get in the middle of that, and I can't, can't stress enough, we're communicating to our citizens about that rate, possible rate decrease for twenty twenty-three. Like I said, I, I, it's not unreasonable. Uh, it's a, it's a decent rate, you know, that we're getting, and we're providing an outstanding service. Uh, and trust me, we don't want to see trash on our curbs and like we have in our cities, other, um, other parts of the other cities around us. Good job. You know, I think what's critical about that discussion is like, when people don't pay, then all of us that pay are paying the bill. Right? And I mean, it's, it's dogged and right. So if you don't, if you don't pay, the rest of us have to be. It's, it doesn't not get paid, it's still having to be paid. And so that means other, that we're paying for other people's services. Individually. I'm all for, uh, stopping the service in two months, if that's not getting paid. My concern is, what are they doing for trash? Is it getting dumped around their can? Is it getting dumped at her house, my house, in our, in our hay yarders and open tops at our city? You know, that's something we have to take.
We have solar rain traction there.
I think it has to be, uh, phase one and phase two, you know? Uh, we stop the service, and maybe phase two, but we pull the dumpsters all together. We're not going to pay in this, or whatever. But that's, that's a buy.
All right, um, well, we will try to wrap it up pretty quick. I just wanted to do a quick reminder, because before our next meeting, I believe, is our citywide garage sale. And so, um, Zach, oh, could you remind us where people can sign up for that and get the information?
Uh, that's, uh, that's correct. So it'll be May seventh, it's the citywide garage sale. There's no permitting or signing up required to participate. But if you do want to have your address listed on the interactive map that we've got out there, um, we've got it a Facebook event page, so you can post it in any of the comments there. You can send it to my email directly at Z Daniel at Edwardville KS dot org, and we'll get your address on that, um, that master interactive map. But you don't need to sign up or register to participate, but if you want your address on that map so people know where the sales are at, just send it my way.
And could you give us a quick update on the text communication?
Yes, so we just launched that. So if you go to our webpage right now, there's a little widget in the corner of the, of the page. It tells you, uh, the number to text. And right now, how it functions is, is there's certain prompts and keywords that it responds to. So if you text, you know, it'll start with you texting high or a low to this certain number, and then it will ask you what your concern is. And depending on what the keyword is, it will send you a link or a phone number to call. So if I send something about, uh, court, when's my court date? It will send you a link to our court page, which spells out, here's all the court dates of the first and third Thursdays of the month, and here's the number for the court clerk who you need to call. So as more people get signed up to it, uh, we're going to be able, the, the real value to it, from my perspective, is the outreach portion of it. So if we can get a good group of people who provide, there's a certain, we can't, we have a bank of numbers that we, that, you know, from utility billing. It's illegal for us to just import those into a, a mass notification system. So there needs to be, we're figuring out a way to get, how do we get these phone numbers from people so that include them into the notification? So that way, we get a good bank of numbers from the residents. Say we get, you know, a thousand numbers, we can send a text, uh, a week before, or the day that the bill goes out. Utility bills are being sent out now. Uh, they're due on the fifteenth of, of May. Or if we get a, a, some system in our court system saying, uh, your court date is on the first Thursday is, is coming up, or here's your option to pay early, so you don't have to come into court. Here's a link to do that. So those notification pieces of it are, I think, where the real value is from an outreach perspective, because not everybody uses the internet, but, you know, out, not, more and more people, even the less tech savvy people, have a, some kind of mobile cell phone device that if we can get them to sign up for this outreach, then it's just another way that we can reach out to them that, that they're getting the information that we want to communicate about. Uh, Autumn Fest is coming up, citywide cleanup's coming up, your court date's coming up. Here's an option to pay early. And then.
Your trash bills do.
Your trash bills do, or, or, you know, a whole wide gamut of, of, of notification we can give to folks. So, uh, right now, it operates under like a prompt system. So we're going to be kind of fine tuning those keywords once we get a better sense of how people are actually using the service. Um, but yeah, we're excited about getting people signed up for it.
Thank you for that.
On that point, can we, are we going to, uh, get like weather alerts sent out in that, too?
We could potentially.
Severe weather, you know, not like it's going to be seven eighty. I mean, it's like there's a tornado coming.
We could, we could do some, we could, I'm sure there's something we could think to that effect. If nothing else, that if we know severe weather's coming, we can say something to the effect of, you know, the fire department will unlock the community center for a storm shelter event in, you know, in this case or that case or something. So that, I mean, it's exactly those kind of, uh, uh, both kind of regularly scheduled updates. Here's this event, here's that event, bills are coming up. And then the kind of more dynamic updates that we want to provide to folks that are more. There's a, there, there's a water leak on, on Shawnee Drive, and you need to, and road's going to be closed for how many hours? Just so we can, just another way to get that information out, because it's all, I can make that text update. If we have a bank of numbers from any computer anywhere, I just got to sign up, click the, the group that I want to send the notification to, and then it goes to them. So if we've got a power line down at Edwardville Drive, type that in, power line down at Edwardville Drive, road's going to be closed right now, send it out, everybody gets it on their phone who signed up for it. So it's trying to, we need more people to sign up for it, is, is, at, at, at the front end. So we're kind of figuring out ways to get the word out about it.
Very good. And Councilman Scott, you just.
I, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. We, we had our traffic meeting this morning there at the Speedway. And I know we had a question last time about, uh, if we're going to close that northbound, uh, on Hundred and Tenth Street. And the answer, uh, short answer is yes. Uh, that will be closed to going across the bridge. Uh, you'll be able to go north and then turn eastbound on I seventy. That will only go into effect for two hours Saturday on the post event. Um, so that should be about nine o'clock, nine P M. Saturday night, that you wouldn't be able to go north across the bridge. And then on Sunday would be about, uh, between four thirty to six thirty, um, post event on Sunday. That's correct. That's correct. We're, we're thinking our traffic, you know, coming inbounds shouldn't interfere with highway patrol. Shouldn't, is thinking that it won't affect us loading in. Uh, twenty-some thousand people for Saturday and thirty-eight to thirty-nine for Sunday.
So we can go Hundred and Tenth straight to the race track?
Yes. Yep. That's what they're telling me right now.
Have that communicated like we do our other street closures ahead of time, so people complain accordingly? Yeah, we'll verify.
Yeah.
It's a very similar path, as previous. They should have somebody to sign their traffic count. You may even stop because the ingress is pre-kept on.
Yeah.
Right, so you may not get across the bridge immediately.
But that's still got to be a veteran driving twelve miles to go two miles.
Yeah. It, it should be, it, it seems like it's going to be more relaxed this time than it has been in the past on the load in. So keeping our fingers crossed that nothing changes between now and then.
Very good. And, um, the last thing I've got is, I, I noticed, well, I didn't notice, during the meeting, we have scheduled a public hearing coming up. And so one thing I would like to introduce or consider as a policy is whenever we have a public hearing, I've seen some other cities, they'll post on their website and they'll post on social media a separate announcement, so that the public's really encouraged to come, especially since a lot of times our public hearings, um, not so much necessarily in the industrial park, but in the neighborhoods, might affect more than people live within two hundred feet. So they won't have those notices mailed to them, but as a policy, just do a separate, um, hey, public hearing announcement on the website or wherever we announce our agendas, so people are fully aware and, and know to come and be a part if they choose to. That's all for tonight. Thank you.